Good evening. I'd like to call this February 7th regular meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bremer, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
All my sure friends, please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Leading us in prayer this evening is Pastor Dave Adams from New Song Ministries, right up the street from me on 31st Street.
Indeed.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors, pray. Father in heaven, I just am honored to be able to be here in the heart of our city and to welcome you here and to invite you into our presence to seek your wisdom, your understanding, your mercy, your compassion. Father, we thank you for your goodness upon this city. You love this city deeply as we do here, and Father, we thank you that we can call upon you. Lord, I do ask your blessings on this council and on our mayor tonight, Lord, that you would give them wisdom. I thank you for their energy and their thoughts and their wisdom and their planning and their time that they give to this city, Lord. We are blessed to have them. I thank you that we are even able to do this. Lord, I pray for the welfare of our city. Lord, I ask that you would bless our businesses, Lord, our education. Father, we pray for the emotional health and well-being of our community, Lord. We pray for love and kindness in neighbors. We pray for divisions, Lord, that you would erase them, but we pray for unity. God, I just thank you for what you long to do, Lord, not just for what you've done, but what you long to do in our midst, and we ask you to do it. Now, give this council wisdom tonight, Father. Give them understanding, give them compassion and sympathy for the people of this community, Lord. Guide them and lead them. Thank you, Father Jesus. Amen.
All right. Thank you, Pastor Adams. Item number four, Agenda Changes. Are there any agenda changes by any of the commissioners? Seeing that there are none, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Frierson?
Okay.
Second by McDowell. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five is Citizens' Comments. Mary Lou Hildebrand. Oh, and, excuse me, Mary Lou, before you start, I'd like to read something that -- and you can remain there, it'll be short. I always like to read the procedures for public comment at city council meetings. The opportunity to speak to the city council is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the city. The city council appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The council strives to make the best decisions for the city, and public input is very helpful. The city must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting. It is unlawful for any person to disturb or interrupt a meeting of the city council. Please be respectful for the duties of the city council and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please state your name and address and address your comments to the council. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Please be factual and courteous, and the council requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the council or staff. To the extent multiple speakers are addressing a single issue, the chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers making public comments of a repetitive nature and/or limit the amount of time for public comment. The city council does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period. Thank you. Mary Lou?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. I'm Mary Lou Hildebrand with Zion ESDA, 3222 27th Street in Zion. During the months of January, your ESDA volunteers served a total of seventy-seven and a quarter hours for a value to the city of $2,314. We responded to a call from the police department for an accident. We performed a monthly siren test, held a command staff meeting and our monthly members' meeting, as well as administering duties for the operation of the team. We assisted with setup and traffic for the monthly food pantry, as well as duty times to maintain the center and the unit. Our members respond when needed, and new additions to our unit would be beneficial to the city. If you care about your city and have time to spare to help your city, please consider donating your time and talents to ESDA. You can apply by filling out an application on the city website. Thank you for your continued support.
All right. Thank you, Mary Lou, and thank you for everything that ESDA does within our community. Melissa Siegel.
Hello, my name is Melissa Siegel. Today's the seventh month of my son getting murdered in the street of Zion, Illinois. Major concerns about how we're going to keep our kids safe this summer. Could that be added to the agenda? Also, I know that this was turned down, but I think it's very important, and I think it should be looked at again. Camera putting cameras in the parks. It would be beneficial for the time that the police department spends on cases, and it would just be very beneficial to help the community. Another thing, how many officers are trained in mental health on the Zion Police Department? I know I had gone to the meeting for the sheriff's department, and they said that they were working on officers, but it was all -- well, now it's the law, so I'm just wondering how many officers were going to be sent to that to get trained? Because I think that's very important. We have a mental health issue going on in our -- in Lake County, and it would help many people. Another thing, I think that -- and I don't know if, like, the interpreters are -- if you got this idea from Milwaukee for Lake County, but I think that, you know, they have a good thing started to maybe watch, you know, the news, and I don't know if everybody else is watching the news, what's happening in Milwaukee, I mean, especially with Officer, rest in peace, but also about -- they really respect mothers of murdered victims. There's no respect. I shouldn't call the city and be -- have an attitude on the other line. It's not right. It's not right. You don't know what it feels like to be in my shoes. You don't know. And I just want to say, you're going to continue to see my face until there's change in Zion, because there has to be change. We have to keep these kids safe. It's very important. It's number one. They're our future. They're our future. Another thing, I know I only have three minutes, I don't know what time I'm at, but Zion has become very -- they're not transparent anymore. Everything is hush-hush about -- we don't know. I know, because I'm on the streets, you know, living in -- living, I see the sirens, I see everything going on, but nothing is posted anymore, and I think that would be beneficial. I know people talk about Zion, you know, about how it's unsafe. It is unsafe. It is unsafe, but people need to know, to be aware of their surroundings. And so you'll continue to see my face until there's change, because I'm still doing it for Diego.
Thank you. Item number six, Consider Agenda?
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on January 17th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? So moved.
Second.
Motion by McDowell, second by Holmes. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries.
Bills vouchers 142353 through 142513 on Huntington National Bank, total $1,275,615.99.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
All move to approve the bills.
A motion by Fisher, second by McDowell. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number six C is a proclamation of special recognition of 2/11 Day. So whereas the United Way of Lake County has been dedicated to serving children and families in our communities for more than 100 years, and whereas the critical service 2-1-1 Lake County, which was launched by United Way of Lake County on September 24, 2019, is open and available for everyone in Zion and across Lake County, Illinois, and whereas 2-1-1 is a free confidential, easy-to-remember, one-stop helpline that connects people in need to a wide range of essential health and human services and reduces non-emergency calls to 911, and whereas 2-1-1 enables the people of Lake County to get connected to help 24 hours a day, every day of the year, by phone, text, and online, regardless of the language they speak or where they live, and whereas 2-1-1 expert navigators are trained specialists who will listen, identify underlying problems, and guide people to available resources, and whereas since 2-1-1 launched, has made nearly 200,000 connections to help from every ZIP code in Lake County, including Zion, and whereas 2-1-1 team members have compassionately answered 459 calls and texts from Zion in the past six months alone, mostly for help with housing and shelter, utilities, food, mental health, and addictions, unemployment, and income support, and whereas 2-1-1 is available to 96 and a half percent of America's population, and Lake County is leading the way as a model to bring 2-1-1 services to all Illinois communities so that every person in Illinois has access to quality information, resources, and assistance for addressing health and human services need, and whereas the city of Zion is a key community partner committed to raising awareness of 2-1-1 to ensure this service can be used by residents and visitors for years to come, and whereas 2-1-1 daily provides vital information and referrals to individuals and families in our community to improve and save lives. Now therefore be it recognized that the Zion City Council hereby proclaims February 11th, 2023, as 2-1-1 Day in Zion and encourages everyone to become aware of the services provided by 2-1-1. Is there a motion to accept this proclamation?
So moved.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. And we do have a representative from 2-1-1 here this evening. Would you kindly stand and give us your name?
Gail Graves, and she is in fact with United Way of Lake County, too.
Thank you for being here this evening, and thank you for all the work you do in our community. I serve on the board and have a board meeting tomorrow, as you are well aware, and thank you for all the help that you've been giving our citizens, especially in the past two years since the pandemic, and we just appreciate what you're doing.
Well, we thank you, and we're honored to be receiving your proclamation, and we want to continue to work with senior residents of Zion and increase awareness around this really valuable helping human services.
All right. Thank you very much. Item number seven, Consider Passing Resolution as Followed. 7A, Authorizing the Transfer of Property from the City of Zion to the Zion Park District Per Administrator Enable.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We're always trying to find ways to better utilize public assets, not just city property, but all taxing body property and work together. In talking with the staff over at the park district, we became aware that they were looking to demolish their existing maintenance building, which is dated and has a lot of issues, over by Hebron, and they were looking for property to potentially rebuild and expand those facilities. We reached out to them and said, hey, we've got a couple parcels down in Ebenezer, would that suit your needs? And they looked at that, they could actually get a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 environmental on it to make sure there was no issues there. And we said, well, we can work with you on that, and then hopefully that we have the property over on Hebron where their existing facilities are for potential future use in that area that we can invest in, that would be beneficial for the community as a whole. We're looking at some options for actually a joint fuel island, fuel station, where we can have all taxing bodies participate in to save money on fuel costs, kind of get some economies of scale, and have it actually be expandable to other taxing bodies as well to take advantage of that, to benefit everyone. They agreed that they would be open to using those, the property where their existing maintenance building is, as a central location for that project down the road, but currently we're not utilizing those properties for anything, and it would be a good use for the maintenance building and save the park district some money as well. So recommending transfer of that property to the park district as presented.
All right. Is there a motion?
All move to approve.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Clerk, please call a roll.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
So in essence, is the -- does the transfer just transfers it off the city tax roll to the park district tax roll?
Yeah, it's transfer of ownership. I mean, there's no taxes on it, whether it's city or park. So, you know, eventually if the park were to sell it or put it on to a private entity, they could do that, and it benefits all taxing bodies that have it on the tax rolls, but there's no tax impact for the transfer.
All right. Any additional questions? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number eight, Discussion Authorization Approval. 8A, Consider Approval of a Renewal Agreement with Northern Illinois Regional Crime Lab, NIRCL, per Chief Barton. I say it, NERC?
NERC. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is just a quote or invoice that we received, and I respectfully request the approval of the attached invoice for NERC or the Northern Illinois Regional Crime Lab. Zion Police Department uses the crime lab to process, evaluate, compare evidence for criminal prosecution. If there's questions, I'd be happy to answer on the full set of these.
Is there a motion to approve this renewal agreement?
So moved.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Questions? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 8B, Consider Approval of Lake County State's Attorney Office Forensic Cyber Crime Laboratory Annual Membership Per Chief Barton.
Again, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. So I apologize that we're getting to these in February, although I did receive these late January, so that's why they're on this meeting, but this is regarding the membership of the Lake County State's Attorney Office Forensic Cyber Crime Lab. Zion Police Department uses the Lake County State's Attorney Cyber Crime Lab to review, analyze, download evidence from electronic devices for violent crimes, including homicide, aggravated battery, sex assault, and it's pertinent to the investigation and charging of criminal cases brought to or investigated by the Zion Police Department. Staff requests and recommends a continued membership of the Lake County State's Attorney's Office Cyber Lab for investigative services and evidence collection. This will be effective January 1 from '23 through December 31 of '23. For the membership rate for the city of Zion is at $49.95 for the calendar year, and that's based on population.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by Fisher. Any questions, comments from our council? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 8C, Consider Approval of Purchase of Additional Body-Worn Cameras and Necessary Equipment in the Police Department Per Chief Barton.
Again, thank you, Honorable Mayor McKinney and Commissioners. This is a little bit of housekeeping as we have previously worked to improve our staffing levels through the COPS grant. With the approval of the COPS grant, we are adding five additional police officer positions to the ranks. I respectfully request the approval to outfit those officers with the necessary equipment and provide body worn cameras in line with state statute. A quote was received from our current vendor to add the system we currently -- to add to the system we currently have. The cost to add to the additional body worn cameras will be $18,886 for a term of four years, falling in line with our existing agreement, or $34.74 annually. This cost covers the hardware and software for the additional five officers.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments?
I do have one question. Does this -- is this concurrent with the existing contract, or does this extend it?
So, no, this one's a little bit shorter. This one will expire at the same time the other contract expires, so we're not overlapping on our terms. So when this one expires, the current contract that we have will expire at the same time, and then we'll have to decide what we're going to do there, either renew with them or different thing.
Is the cost -- is the cost the same, even though it's a shorter term?
It is the same per -- really, the cost is the software, so it is the same, it falls in line with what we previously received, so yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And a first and a second. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number nine, Departmental Commentary. Director Iason?
Thank you, Your Honor. Chief of the Chief of some areas, smoke detectors, I just wanted to mention how important carbon and oxide detectors are. If you have possible fuel appliances, purposes, water heaters, dryers, even attached to the garage, you're required to have CO detectors within 15 feet of all sleeping areas. That could be a battery, a plug-in with a battery backup, or even a hard-wired combination of a smoke detector, so it's within 15 feet of all sleeping areas.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Director Iason. Director Roberts?
Thank you, sir. Late when we have been receiving an uptick in residents calling us on high water rates. We will respond to these and go out and take a look at the homeowners' properties. Most of the time what we find is leaking toilets and dripping faucets. I know it doesn't sound like much, however, a leaking toilet can average out to about 200 gallons a month, which in turn, on a three-month quarterly bill, that would turn out to almost $100 increase. So another thing we've been finding, too, is people leaving their hose bids on, and because it's been warm, and then it got cold, and it froze. That has directly impacted that. The only thing is, we do this as a courtesy. Our water technicians, our mainline technicians, they are not plumbers, so they are not certified to make any repairs. They've been asked for a few times. The homeowner will still need to hire or exist their local plumber for whoever they want to make those repairs. A few things a homeowner can do if they feel like it's the meter, and 99% of the time it's never metered. I'll leave that 1% in there. We will pull a meter for a charge to test it and then have to replace it. However, any water that's gone through that meter is the homeowner's responsibility to bear. Few things they can do on their own if they feel they have a leaking toilet, put some food dye in the tank, leave it overnight, take a look in the bowl and see if there's any of that dye that's been through it. Nine times out of 10, it's a flapper valve inside there. That's an easy fix. However, that gets worse and worse, and you can call it a lot of cost. Other than that, that's all I have to say.
All right. Director Roberts, just one question I have. Can you address, and I should have talked to you about this before, just the lead line?
I'm on the spot.
Yes. The lead line replacement and the percentage of lead lines in our community, that's been a big issue nationally, and I was in DC for that last weekend. From what I recall, we replaced our lead lines in the 60s or 70s in the city of Zion?
We did. The city actually passed more than this early in the 60s, which is very helpful, because we -- our percentage that we have come across, in my time being here, 16 years, we've only come across three. However, we, per the IEPA requirements, we are doing an inventory of the whole city, of all service lines. And how we are doing this is, if you call us for a high bill check, part of what the technician's going to look at is the pipes coming up into the -- out of the ground to the meter. We'll identify that, and then we mark it down if we spot the lead or not. We have not, in the last four years, we've done quite a few water main replacements. We're spot -- we're inventorying at that time also. That is actually out of the last four years, we've only had one. So we're pretty much on top of that. It's -- we're probably right now looking at 60% of the city that we inspect.
All right.
We have till April of 2024 to complete that inventory that we've turned in, and then, I believe, it's 2027, and then you have to have a plan to put it into IEPA on how you are going to replace the water. As of right now, per the city's ordinance, the homeowner is responsible from the tap on the main, including the tap to the side valves.
Okay.
There are grants out there that we could help possibly, if the homeowner comes across that, to apply for through IEPA.
And the reason I brought that up, for anyone that are people that are in attendance and that might be watching our council meeting, a couple weeks ago, I was in Washington, DC and at a lead line replacement summit with Vice President Kamala Harris, and also I was there as the Chair of the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative, and one of the things that we're trying to do is almost 10 million, there's almost 10 million lead lines left in the country, and six out of those 10 millions are in the Great Lakes State. So we were there trying to make sure that the infrastructure, Biden's infrastructure team, would make sure that they were directing a lot of that money, or a great deal of that money, some of the money, to the Great Lakes for the cities that still are dealing with that property, that issue like Chicago and Milwaukee. And I spent some time with the mayor of Milwaukee there, talking about it. It typically happens in the urban areas, and lead and water, of course, impacts mine development for young kids, and one of the things that the Biden administration is trying to make sure is that we have safe water to drink, clean water, and affordable water. So, thank you, and I know I texted you about that when I was in DC, as I was asked that question.
Well, to add on that a little bit is, some of the concern in the major cities is to use some old pipe. It was ductile pipe, but it had Ochrone packed in the seals and sealed with lead. We, in the city of Zion, even though we have some 100-year-old pipes, we never utilize that. So on our mainlines, we have no lead. Any lead that would be out there would be on a person's service line.
And so, to that effect, Ray, I know that they're also talking about one of the parts of the bill, they were talking about being able to help the residents if there -- if that was discovered, the lead going from -- to their house, that the federal government would provide funds to help the residents, because they know how much it costs, so thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Chief Streep?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Just one update tonight. Most of you probably realize Tuesday mornings of the first -- the first Tuesday morning of every month at 10:00 a.m., we test the emergency sirens around the city. A couple of those have not been activated the last few months, the one here on City Hall, and the one out on Green Bay Road near Ninth Street, and the other two possibly have had some intermittent issues as well. Just wanted to let you know we're working on that. The one out on Green Bay Road, we're waiting that the -- The one out on Green Bay Road, we're waiting, the, the company that we use to fix these things are still waiting for parts. No ETA in those yet. And then the one here on City Hall could be a signal issue from our dispatch center. We're just trying to nail those down, so we're not going without emergency notification for too much longer. In the meantime, if we do have to get emergency notification out, as you all know, we have Blackboard Connect system. We, we hope everybody is either signed up for that or will, and we can put out emergency notifications electronically by many different means. So, just wanted to let you know we're working on it. We have identified there are some issues with that notification system, and we're doing our best to fix that as soon as possible.
Okay, Chief, can, can you explain for those that might be watching our city council meeting or reviewing them, how they can sign up for Blackboard, because we've been pushing that a lot. It's not overused, we don't overuse it, but in case of emergencies, we want to be able to contact our residents and keep them informed as to what's happening.
Yeah, absolutely. The, the very easiest way would be to go to cityofzion.com, right on the front page, on the left-hand side, there's a, a link to click that'll bring you right to Blackboard Connect and step you through the process of getting logged in and signed up and all that stuff. But if you're not tech, you know, too technologically inclined, you can call my state, fire station directly, and I'll help you right through that, and I'll take down your information and get you logged in. Eight four seven seven four six four zero three six. We'll be happy to help you out.
All right, thank you, Chief Streep. Chief Barton?
Good evening again, Mayor. I got a few things, if I, if I may, to discuss some, some, some of the hard work that our officers have, have been working on. I apologize if this is lengthy, but I, I think it's important and, and good to note, to, to, to make, make aware of the, the public. There were, they've been working on some cases, specifically Joseph Strong, he was charged with a drug-induced homicide. It stems from two overdose deaths from August two, twenty twenty-two, and August third of twenty twenty-two, in the thirty-four hundred block of Sheridan. Strongest suspected, is the suspected drug dealer, provided lethal drugs that caused the two deaths. He was arrested in Waukegan. Taishan and Jamari Pickett were both charged with the attempted first-degree murder and aggravated discharge of a firearm. This stems from a shooting from, on August, I'm sorry, on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, in the twenty-three hundred block of Jethro. Jamari was arrested in Waukegan, and Taishan was already in custody in the Lake County Jail on unrelated charges, and he was served with his warrant there. Additional charges and other shootings are still pending for both of those individuals. Tracy Davis was charged and arrested in, with the first-degree murder for a shooting that caused death on February sixteenth, twenty eighteen, in the twenty-eight hundred block of Adina. Tracy Davis was located in Minnesota. Our detectives did a lot of work on locating him, and he was subsequently extradited to the Lake County Jail, arriving on February sixth, twenty-three. Davis joins co-defendant Xavier Wells, who was charged back in twenty eighteen on that same case. Tyrone Watson wanted for an ag discharge of a firearm for an incident that occurred in Highland Park in eight fifteen of twenty twenty-two. Zion Police Officers, specifically the Street Crimes Unit and NiPIS SWAT Team assisted Highland Park in Watson's apprehension in the two thousand block of Elum. A fourteen-year-old juvenile was wanted for the first-degree murder for an incident that occurred in October of twenty twenty-two in the nineteen hundred block of Ezra. Zion detectives and NiPIS SWAT arrested the juvenile in Waukegan shortly after. Michael White arrested and charged with the first-degree murder and aggravated battery with a firearm for two incidents that occurred earlier this month. The first occurring in the twenty-seven hundred block of Hebron, and the second occurring in the sixteen hundred block of Barnhart. And notable, this wasn't an arrest, but this is an upholding of the work that our officers have done, appellate court of the, of the Illinois Second District upheld the guilty verdict for DeJavon Hudson, who was convicted and sentenced in nineteen, or in twenty twenty-one for the attempted murder and the forcible sexual assault that occurred in twenty seventeen. He will remain in prison and, to serve his seventy-year sentence. So, there's, there's, there's a lot of, in public comment, there was a mention of what's happening and what are the police doing, and, and how do we make our streets safer? This is a timely, obviously, I didn't talk with anybody about public comment coming here, but very timely, there, there's a lot of work that our detectives and our officers are working on. And these things, as, as you heard, some of the dates go back several years, and they take time, they take a lot of work, and when possible, and when ready, charges are brought forward to the state's attorney's office. And if they, if they deem that they're, they are worthy of being charged, then they make those, those, those things take place. So, we are working to, to rid our streets of these violent offenders. As you can tell in just a couple of these, these words, there's, we've dealt with a lot in the last few years, and we are continuing to do that. We will stand poised and stand ready for other community members or, or citizens. We need to be prepared. If you have an event, or if you have something going on, let us know so we can be on standby. And this goes for other taxing bodies, this goes for citizens, this goes for all involved. We can't, we, we can only be as good of help as, as if we're, as we're made aware of. So, we can't remind, we, we don't know what's happening, but we, we ask and plead for partnership, collaboration, communication, in a way that makes us all successful. So, I apologize for taking a long time, but these are some really notable things that just really in the last month, month and a half since January have happened.
Chief, just a, a question here, so that our, our listening or watching audience really understands, when you talk about a public event happening, the police department, department, if informed, has to be special service requested for an event? Could you explain that?
Yeah, yes, sir. That, that's, special duty is what we call it. We have a form that, that you can fill out and request an officer to provide special services where they could be at your, your function. Just in this last week, we had an event at the high school, a very scary event. It was a shooting, it was, it was, we got lucky. I, I'll say it that way. We got lucky, we had some vehicles hit by some bad actors that were not from our town, but they brought that to our town. And we, because of that, we need to be informed, we need to be notified, we gotta be aware of these things that are happening so we can be ready to assist. Even if we're just close by, maybe in, you know, nearby, if you let us know you're having a big party, if something like that happens, we can, we can drive through, extra, extra patrol, we can be, we can be a little bit more ready and prepared in case something does happen. That's all we ask for is just the notification of it. It doesn't have to be anything formal, just, you can call dispatch to, hey, I'm having a party, or this is going on, just be aware. If you do need a special duty request, or you do have a special duty request, we can, we will evaluate that, and we will fulfill that as best we can, if, if available.
Right. There was another question asked by Ms. Siegel about mental health and training with the police officers. Could you, could you address that a little bit?
Absolutely. So, it, it is a law now, we will, we will obviously comply with that. We will get our officers through as quickly as we can, and Administrator Nabel and I have, we've already had these discussions, this is, we've, you know, I'm glad there's a law in place, but we're not gonna wait on the law to, to set the precedent of what we do. We've had these discussions, we've put it in our budget, and we're planning for officers, one, to be checked for them, you know, for, for their own health and well-being, but then, we also utilize what's called CIT, Crisis Intervention, and a number of our officers are certified with that course, but that's a brand name course. Mental health training, though, exists on so many realms, so because we only have a number of our officers CIT trained, and that training only comes around so often, we still send our officers to other mental health trainings, even though it's not CIT labeled, but that's a branding.
And also, when I was down in Decatur, Illinois, at the Training Center, Police and Fire Training Center, I could say that the officers were being trained in mental health approaches as they arrived on scenes by, they were setting up different scenes to how to de-escalate. So, that's part of the training process with officers before they really put on the, a uniform of any municipality.
Yes, sir. So, that's great that we do that, and they get that exposure early on, but I think a lot of times in the academy, everything's just like a whirlwind. But this council has, has approved it, because you see the foresight in what we need to do, we have approved a, a headset, a virtual reality training that we can do on shift, and that's reoccurring. So, it's not just a one-and-done at the beginning of their career. We do that on shift, we do it multiple times a month. So, that's something that we have put into place because we recognize the tremendous importance for what this, this training and what this stuff can do, because de-escalation, you really only get one shot. So, we gotta do it right, and we train our people as often as we, as we can, even using more technologically-based things, including virtual reality. Just, just as an example.
All right, all right, thank you, Chief. Administrator Nabel?
Skip over Chris this time?
I'm sorry.
She gets to follow that.
Mine's super quick.
And Chris, would you, Chris just recently joined us, and I'm sorry because I was not at the last meeting because I was in DC, would you introduce yourself to our?
I'm Chris Conway, I'm the new Finance Director, thank you. I just want to say we're interviewing for our full-time administrative staff and trying to get geared up for vehicle sticker sales April first. That's all that's going on.
All right, my apologies, Chris.
That's okay. I didn't know if I was blocking.
Actually, yeah, he was, it was like an eclipse over there.
Yeah.
Administrator Nabel?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I just wanted to report on, for those that attended, we had a very successful, I don't know if we call it a state of the community, but a community forum event a couple of weeks ago, I don't know if that's our fourth or fifth one, depending on whether you count the initial presentation that we did at Performing Arts Center a few years ago, but it was very well-attended, I think it was our highly attended, or highest-attended event to date. We got a lot of good feedback from the public. This was an opportunity to, not only, for us to share the results of prior meetings and what we've done to implement suggestions and feedback from the community, but then continue to gather feedback from the community on specific topics, events, what we're doing within the community, and, and really get that interaction, both with the community leaders and all the elected officials that attended. So, it was very well-attended, we're gathering all the feedback and compiling that so that we can take action on, on things that we can, as a result of that. We'll be sharing the results of that at our next meeting, as well as discussing additional topics, and currently, that's slated for the middle of April. We sent out a postcard to everyone, both in Spanish and English, for that event, so as those details are solidified, I think we're looking at sending that out towards the end of March, so keep an eye out for that. But then we'll post it on all social media pages as well, and Design Quarterly will have those dates and times as well. So, keep an eye out for that, it's a great opportunity, great event for interaction and to really play a part in your government operations.
All right, thank you, Administrator Nabel. Commissioners, Commissioner McDowell, any, any comments?
Yeah, just a few things with some of the events going on in the city, and I appreciate what Chief Barton had to say about the fine work that our police department does. And I know, Mayor, you've been involved in conversations about these things, and I'm glad we have these professionals that are working hard. And often, we wonder, well, what is the average citizen to do in situations like this? And Pastor Dave Adams, when he prayed, he, he referenced a passage of scripture that I think addresses that. What does the average citizen do in crisis? And he, what he referenced is a letter that Jeremiah sent to the people of Israel who were in exile. So, they were living in a very dangerous place. God had brought them there, brought them to Babylon, and he wrote them this letter. This is what the Lord Almighty, the God of Israel, says. "I carried you into exile from Jerusalem to Babylon. Build houses and settle down. Plant gardens and eat what they produce. Marry and have sons and daughters. Find wives for your sons and give your daughters in marriage so that they too may have sons and daughters. Increase in number there, do not decrease. Seek the peace and prosperity of the city to which I have carried you. Pray to the Lord for it, because if it prospers, you too will prosper." So, some practical words for us is live a normal life. Plant gardens, eat what they produce, find, you know, get married, and live a, a normal life. Bring some normalcy to the situation. So, that's what I'd like to say today.
All right, thank you, Commissioner McDowell. Commissioner Fryerson?
I'll say thank you to the chief for laying out all the work that the department is doing. I guess my other note would be to the community for, looking at safety here in Zion, one of the things I think that we can do as residents is, it can't be overstated, is getting to know your neighbors, getting to know the people on the block. I know that it can be very scary, you know, sometimes there are blocks that we live on, and you see neighbors, and, you know, they don't look like someone that you're familiar with, and we can be reserved or hesitant to go out and, and meet them and figure out, you know, where they come from, and kind of set a standard or a culture for your block. I know I was fortunate enough to have some neighbors that did that for me. And then also, one of the things that hit my head as I was raising my kids here in the city is, I have to care about the sons and the daughters of the neighbors because those may be the people that my children grow up to marry, right? So, it's not enough for me just to look at my house and figure out, well, if mine are okay, then everything's okay, and that's not true. We have to get out, we have to open up. I like to comment about, you know, living a normal life, get out, do things, create a culture that is not about violence and not about, you know, those things that bring that element into our community. And that's, that's my note for what we can do as, as residents. And then, again, like the chief mentioned, the police is always on standby, we have our district sergeants, we have that information out on the website. So, always a phone call away, if there's any questions that you have for, you know, any of the commissioners, everyone is accessible, and just get involved. Whatever that means for you, get involved in a meaningful way.
Commissioner Fisher?
Just briefly, Administrator Nabel mentioned the community meeting that we had, what was that, was on the twenty-eighth, correct? Yeah. And the thing that to me is, you mentioned the, the turnout, and what I found is, the most important thing for me is listening to what the residents have to say. And so, getting their feedback was probably the most important part of the entire process, and probably the most productive part of the entire process. But I do want to thank everyone, all the department heads and everyone else who chipped in and, and did presentations and ran from room to room, and under a very tight time schedule, they fit a lot into just a couple hours, but I think it was a very successful event, and that, that was a very good foundation for getting feedback directly from residents, and I think that's something that we need to follow up on in the future.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Holmes?
A couple things, I echo that as well, because I was in attendance at that Zion Community Leaders Event. Definitely, a lot of vibrant conversations, suggestions, people received some of the feedback well, I, I do believe. Another thing, for those who celebrate Black History Month this month, happy Black History Month. I'm definitely celebrating. The last thing, Chief Barton, thank you very much for your transparency in terms of the, the, the things that you, the, the things that you listed, that, that last person on your list is my cousin. And you turn, and you talk about mental health training, I definitely appreciate hearing that, the transparency around that, because not only is it important from the, you know, the administration side, you know, having the family, you know, and from onset, there were issues with, with my cousin, and, you know, just, he's, he's in prison for the rest of his life, unfortunately. So, thank you for, for that.
All right, thank you. I have just a couple of comments. Ms. Siegel, thank you for coming this evening and, and making your comments, and I want to apologize to you of our conversation today, if you thought I was not being respectful.
Yeah.
I, I, you, you hit it right on the head. I cannot, I could not fathom how you're feeling after losing your son, and it was not my int- And it was not my intent, when I talked to residents, to disrespect anybody. So, my apologies for that. My, I want to say this. I'm not perfect. This community means a lot to me. And we are working very hard, and I have such great confidence in the people in this room and that aren't here, about trying to change the state of this and the perception of this community. We're not going to be perfect. We're going to make some mistakes. And when we make those mistakes, what we do as a group is collectively, we talk about what we can do to make sure we don't make that same mistake. So, again, my apologies, it was not my intent, and we are so sorry for your loss. And having said that, you asked about cameras in the parks. We've had that discussion with our Zion Leaders Group, and one of the biggest issues right now is finding an internet source and a power source to be able to have the cameras there. When I was in DC last week, meeting, I happened to be sitting in on a presentation about broadband for the community. So, I have already reached out to this person that provides broadband for the community, but those would have to go through the school systems and the park districts, and trying to get Wi-Fi for our residents, especially, we're looked at as an underserved community. So, we've been talking about that since you came in and talked with Chief and I about it, so it's not been dead. The mental health issue, it's been plaguing us for the last two years since the pandemic. I'm on the 211 board. The county is doing everything they can to provide mental services for residents. We have the highest call volume here from Zion, and that's why, one of the reasons I joined the board. And our fire department, our building department, whenever they go out, police department, we give out the 211 information. We try to make sure that everyone knows about it. So, we recognize that's an issue. It's not only an issue that we're seeing this in the school system, where kids are trying to indoctrinate, re-indoctrinate themselves back into the school system, but we're seeing it with adults as well. So, we're very aware of it, and we're trying to make sure that we have the resources here to address those issues. Our goal here is to make our city a blue-ribbon city, and we want it to be a safe city, and we are doing everything. We're incorporating technology to try to make sure that when crimes do happen, we've put in flock cameras in different areas, license plate readers, so when cars are fleeing from a scene, we're able to track those people down that have committed the crimes, and they've been successful with our police department and being able to help solve some major issues, crimes here in the city. When I was in DC, I also attended a session on policing, and there were probably 50 mayors in this session. All small towns, big towns, mid-sized towns, and the Department of Justice were there. And the biggest issue that they were talking about was the gun violence within cities. It's happening everywhere. It's not just Zion. And everyone, every mayor, I've talked with Cavalier Johnson, the mayor of Milwaukee, we were on a committee together about, what do we do about this? We're trying to deal with ghost guns, guns that are, 3D guns that are made. So, we're trying to get the guns out of the hands of the teenagers, which I still can't comprehend why kids have guns at 14 and 15 years old. So, we've got a lot of work to do, no doubt about that. But our goal, and I said this when I was running, public safety was the first issue, and we're continuing to work on that. Have we reached our goals in what we're doing? I can't tell you how many guns we've taken off the street in the last four years.
About 80 last year and 90 the year before.
So, 170 guns. So, we are very aware of the issues, all the taxing bodies are, and we just have to continue to work on the issues. So, while we're having this issue of, in our community, we are sharing this with so many communities across the country, it's sickening. It really is. But please trust and know that we are doing everything in our powers to be able to make our city a place, and I've said this, that you can walk down any street, anyone in any street, and feel safe. So, thank you for coming and talking about that tonight. Item number 10 is announcements on the 21st. Oh, we got Valentine's Day on the 14th. Don't forget your Valentine's Day, ladies and gents. And on the 21st, we have a, at 6 o'clock, a Zion Township Board Meeting, and following that, a Zion City Council Meeting. And on March 7th, we will re-convine again for a Zion City Council Meeting at 7:00 PM. Item number 11, we are going to go into closed session to discussion of file pending and/or probable or imminent litigation, sale or purchase of real estate, collective bargaining, legal counsel, and personnel. So, is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Motion to go into closed session by Fisher, second by...
Second.
Thank Holmes beat you to it. We're going to have a couple of items when we come out, so if you want to stay here, or if you want to go home, we'll be in a closed session probably for a little bit. But thank you for coming out tonight, and be safe as you go home. Oh, clerk, please call the rolls.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinnon?
Aye.
Motion carried.